Anything within PennDOT Freeway for the township that affects the drainage. So we'd have to sign two forms. One was for.
The driveway improvements, the driveway HOP, the other ones to be subsurface utility HOP, and that's for the drainage, which we are just putting in additional inlet to accommodate the roadway widening, the additional impervious and additional drainage there. And there's existing pipe underneath the roadway right now, and we are increasing that pipe size to also accommodate the additional stormwater.
And also having some pavement base pipe, which will help as well.
That's why there is two forms this time.
The down far there, the other entrance, going into the parking lot? Is that, is that, so how far is that wide into?
That's one section.
Sorry, which part of it?
Where the, where it goes into the guard shack and the parking lot. So it goes inside the door entrance.
I think the widening varies throughout, but I.
Yeah, we do that. Sorry.
I was just seeing something in that area that I can put the, at the pistol files. I want to say it's, I'd have to get back to.
So is that where the Hebe's is?
Yes.
To the driveway entrance? And that's where it starts?
It starts at Hebe's, that's correct. This Hebe's and it goes up to, um.
The guard shack.
Just past like Temple.
So then it does include that, then?
Yes.
So that's where we're talking.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have to do anything that they.
Yes. So it is, it's, it's actually past where those modulars sit there.
And.
Do you have projected times?
Yeah, I was just gonna get into that. So we're, our goal is to resubmit everything this month. We're on track for that. Um, we have a, um, hopefully based off of the remaining comments, we're projecting only maybe one more resubmission after this. So we're looking at, um, like a July, where we're hoping to get that permit from PennDOT. So, um, and for.
You want us to talk about timing and the detour as well because of all the other work going on. While clearing the board back. That's all going to.
Yeah, we'll stop coordinating that because we're gonna, there's a fair amount that we're gonna need to be known, that's what.
Yes, absolutely. And I, um, will probably defer that to Mark, because I know he's working on the detour plans. Requested, um, closing the road for Hebe's this month.
There's just three days. Diane, I think that's what he talked about with us.
And UGI must have those as well for the detours. It, it was, it makes sense.
Makes it safer.
Yep.
You know, this is all gonna happen before school and the buses and all that stuff.
That's everybody's plan.
It's a plan.
So we would want to see the detour once, if you can ask Mark to make sure, once he's done the detour plan, to submit it to Diane. And so that way we can be circulating some rest classes initially. When the detour emergency services and our accounts, we have to. Milwaukee School, Mario at UGI, and then.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion authorized manager to sign that George O HOP?
No, I don't make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Which cares. Good. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I have one other item, um, that I have on my report. It's not necessarily a detour item, but I continue to request that dollars by state table because there's no activity towards the solution for the punch list that we have. Uh, so in my report, I'm saying it's still tabled.
Okay.
Okay. And that is all it is. Unless you have any questions for me?
Do we want, just to, because it wasn't a comment about, do we just want to touch base on the, with the cornerstone? I know you explained it, but where we're at with it, why we're there.
Um, the cornerstone bridge permits were all released from DP. So we have the permits. Uh, we received a small grant. We requested like around $250,000. We received $86,679. Don't know how they came up with that amount, but that's what we have. And we've started to prep the plans and specs. And one of the big hiccups for this project is the utility relocations that are the ones that go under the creek or under the current cornerstone bridge. Uh, what's being replaced there is a steel arch. And it's going to give a lot more capacity for the creek. And, um, it will pass the hundred year storm, we call the hundred year storm, without overtopping the road. So it's gonna be a soft rise and then transition back into the cornerstone drive and the, there's one driveway or two driveways that will have to be tied in, but it's just to make them a smooth, you know, mill, chew off some of the existing paving and the transition back in. And then along with that are the park improvements for the walkway, some drainage improvements. I'm glad to hear that the light was fixed because that's right in that gentle zone. Timing wise, not sure because we do have restrictions with the permit, depending on the classification of the creek. So, but we're getting together to do the plans and specs, make it very clear to the bidders what the timelines are. But it could take a while really with the utility relocations. It's more of your communicate, I'll say it's the communication.
Yeah, we have service lecture rerouted. Originally, they had a conduit laying in the creek and it was busted up probably from the flood that we had. And they mounted it to the actual side of the bridge. So now they're gonna come out and temporarily disconnect it or reroute it. And then UGI has a, this gas main that goes underneath, they actually water it under the creek. So that's deep, but we gotta burn all that out.
And then the water main.
And the, yeah, the water's a big water main.
But the UGI and the authority aren't a headache. I think it's gonna be more of the other communication franchises out there. But again, it's underway. We're, we're moving forward in the right direction and I think it's great. Um, I would have loved to see more grant money, but at least we got a little bit. Any other questions to put that?
Just, are there gonna be updates provided within the communication with the utilities or that?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to do it.
Absolutely.
As I said, once, once we start getting some more traction with it, then, you know, we'll definitely be bringing it up, so.
Okay. And we'll have a little like memo update in my report that we can.
Oh, I, I pressed on them pretty hard to make sure they. Go on.
Yes, yes, yes.
Looking like in the agenda, like what the minutes everyone, or?
I don't know if it'll be on every month, but I'll try to do a, add something.
On, on the website too.
Yeah, we can probably do that.
That'd be great. Just to, you know, please keep so, don't have to call or whatever.
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. So there's two openings under the bridge now. One seems to be almost 50% clogged with rocks and all kind of debris with the rainy season coming. Are they, any plans to clear that?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be going, yeah, we're allowed to do 50 feet on either side of the bridges. So that was the plan and Keith has already walked, I think, the majority of all the creeks that are, were affected by the flooding in, in the area. And, uh, there, we identified a location where there's trees that gotta get removed that are dead and laying on, you know, over the creek. Um, and that area there, we would definitely have to get down in there and pull some of that out. So, yeah, it's definitely on the spring agenda to, to take a look at it and clean up if necessary, so.
Right. And then the new bridge will only have the one very large opening. We're doing some stream bank restoration to truly realign it, realign the creek with the, the new bridge, so we won't have that problem where half of the bridge gets clogged all the time.
Sounds good. Do you, once the project starts, we're looking at how long of closure?
It's, it's the, it's really the utilities, the contact.
Contact bridges.
Contact is quick, quick break.
So it's gonna be a steel arch bridge. Contact is the, is the brand. Uh, so if you are curious, you could Google it and see it. Um, but it'll be a, like a galvanized arch or I think it's, it's galleon.
Yeah.
So, um, but it, it daylight's on either side and, or goes into the ground either side of the day, but, um, it's clear span. So there's nothing in the middle, there's no way anything's gonna get hung up, caught on that center structure. So that's the biggest problem with what we have now, with everything gets caught up in that middle.
You know, they're gonna try to leave the bridge in as long as they can, but there, there is a point in time where it does have to be demoed, the utility, excuse me, utility relocations, and then of course the detour to align with those activities. Uh, again, that's something we'll be made aware of, it'll be on the website and it'll be born discussed, so it's, uh, very clear to the residents. But that's in place.
Great, thank you.
Is, is eight to 12 weeks a reasonable timeline?
No, that's probably.
Or is it really?
They did one similar to this in Greenwich just last year, and they had it done, pretty much finished in four weeks.
It's quite.
They didn't have the utility realigned.
That's, that's the problem.
So. And so they were building the bridge aside of where it was going in and they were demoing and they had a very, very small window to work in because that stream was, was a trap stream as well.
Yeah. So stay tuned. Those are good news, yeah.
I'm gonna circle back for, they'll go with comment, come back to the problem since you, you joined us now.
Before you.
Oh. Did you know both their names? Oh, I'm sorry.
The Santiago, yes, I do.
Yeah, so who wants to say your name and address and then I'll give a follow comment?
Yes, um, my name is David Ferno, David Ferno, sorry. This is my wife, Rachel Ferno, uh, my daughter, Penelope. Um, yeah, we're, um, here to talk about the, uh, basketball court, um, in Maiden Creek Township. Um, it's sunk in off of Faith Drive. I don't know if you know where that's at.
Does it, did it, do you say your address?
Yeah, 264.
I got you.
I think the basketball court is 264 Faith Drive. Um, and I, you know, I know there is a Northern Burks Regional Police Report. I don't know if that was talked about or anything, but, um, I'm probably the only one that complains, uh, and calls, uh, the police department due to, um, uh, was, I would say a group of young, uh, teenagers and young adults that were there. Yeah. Our property is, is adjacent to that basketball court. It's right in my backyard, our backyard, excuse me. And, um, the, you know, we started to, you know, like, try to, uh, ask politely, you know, the language. That was one of the bigger problems that we were actually having. Um, you know, we said, hey, there's, there's rules up, you know, there's a sign right there, you know, the language, uh, music, um, you know, we're hearing N words, F words, things of that nature. Uh, when we do confront them, it becomes, uh, they, they get louder. Um, and so, uh, we've gotten to that point where we just start calling the police department, um, after that. Um, but now, you know, when you see them, they're, they're smoking, um, they're, you know, that, that, what's that, the, um.
They.
The baking, um, you know, there is drug use, um, they'll go on the other side of the fence line, uh, to hide and, you know, and, and you know, it's, you know, obviously what, what's been going on. Um, and then just the trash and, and things of that nature that are left. Now, we really enjoy the basketball court, you know, our, our daughter, our son, their friends play, uh, but it's normally just this, you know, a particular group that, um, really becomes, um, disrespectful, uh, disrespectful to the rules, disrespectful to, uh, other people playing, uh, you know, there's just no disregard, you know, no regard, I should say, for, uh, you know, children playing, uh, families playing and, and that type of thing. So, um, you know, we've gotten to that point where, again, like I said, last year, there was a knife incident. Uh, the, uh, uh, Northern Burks Police Department was not able to go, uh, uh, go for the call, but the Mullenburg Township Police came. Um, and, and, you know, that kind of stopped some activity in that basketball court, but we were, uh, we understood that there was no charges pressed at that time, but then I told my wife, I said, if there's any issues, we're not confronting them anymore. It is going to be a, a, a phone call to, to the police. But my, my concern is that there, you know, there is no policing of, of that basketball court. Um, you know, the only policing that's being done is by myself and, and my wife, and we'll start to, you know, call the police department. Um, and unfortunately, what's now happening is we were told by the basketball players once we, you know, said, hey, you know, you need to stop, uh, the, the language, please turn down the music, uh, that, uh, they said that, uh, you know, they have every right to be there, which I, I understand they do, um, and they have freedom of speech, which I understand they do. Um, however, it is disturbing the peace. Um, and then I, I did tell them, you know, uh, you know, we'll call the police, and they said, the police told us, not whether this is true or not, I don't know, but, uh, they were told that, um, if I continue to complain, that, um, I will be, um, uh, charged or fined, right? And I was just kind of like taken aback because then I, um, I didn't, you know, believe them, but somebody put that in their, in their mind, right? Uh, somebody had, you know, somebody had mentioned that, whether it was the police department, but I've also had that when the police have come to my home after I've complained, which was a little upsetting to me. Um, and they actually did state to me that, you know, there is a possibility that, uh, you know, the, the police treatment, I'm not putting any words in anybody's mouth, that, uh, if I complain too many times, that I could be charged with something of that nature, right? Um, now the police, when I confronted, you know, I asked them about the, you know, uh, the, the, I should say that, you know, the thought that, um, I could get fined. They said they looked at the police reports, or, you know, at the camera, they didn't hear anybody stating anything of that nature, but they did state that they were, um, the next complaint I had, they would start taking names. But I did complain, I did not get the phone, I asked for a phone call back, I didn't get a phone call back. I will contact them, um, and, and understand if names were taken. Um, but it's, it's something that is very constant, uh, you know, once the weather starts up and kids start to go outside, uh, these same group of, of individuals, and the knife incident was with the same group of individuals, um, you know, these things are gonna start to perpetuate itself. And since there's no policing, you know, I don't want to say that, you know, there's a, a, a cause effect, but they're smoking, you know, they're, they're swearing, there, there's pot smoking, um, you know, and, and things of that nature that are happening and no, there's no consequences or there's no policing of that behavior and they just continue to do it.
Well, I think the bottom, I think the bottom line is, it's not safe. Um, I was witness to the knife incident. Um, the guy had a, a woman in a headlock, a headlock, um, and was attempting to stab her. So it's not safe. I'm home a lot on my own, um, I'm often harassed, um, bystanders are harassed, um, but I just, something has to be done. It's, it's constant, it's not safe for anybody. They also, um, go to the playground across the bridge and it's just not policed. Uh, we were told that it's the township's responsibility.
I've been, I have been made aware of this actually from Northern Burks, even there's a conversation I need to have with, with you at, at some point in time. And same thing with the solicitor at the, at Northern Burks. Um, I'm also gonna suggest, I know David wants to say something too, but I'm also gonna suggest that you do come to Monday's meeting, please.
Unfortunately, we're, we're, yeah, we're here out of the country.
All right, that's fine.
I will make, I definitely make that, uh, the next meeting, but, um.
When was the last time that you had an issue with this?
Last Friday.
Last Friday.
Yes. And we, all we were doing was walking outside our car to go to the Reading Phillies, and they immediately started videotaping us, harassing us, saying very racial slurs to David.
It's, I believe it's.
It's scary, it's scary for our kids, um, to walk onto, and it's a residential area and it's just not safe. And I don't feel comfortable even being outside when they're out there, and that's not fair.
How not to just you.
Confront.
Confronting.
Just keep going, you're going.
Nothing good is gonna come out of that.
And, and maybe at some point you just, I mean, you wanna take your phone and just record what's going on.
Well, that's, that's what I did, right? I, I have cameras around my house.
Okay.
Um, you know, and I, you know, I've already told the, uh, police supervisor, the police, uh, certain police wasn't there, uh, you know, and I, I told him, I will be more than happy to let him know who, you know, you know, who has been doing the behavior, pointing out, you know, on, on camera and that, that type of thing. Um, but it's very hard to like, videotape and then not, you know, be like harassed for videotaping.
Yeah, if you can do it from in your house, that you're not gonna be, but I will tell you this much, uh, as a police officer for many years, I, I have never, ever threatened a victim with arrest for calling unless they were not viable cause. You have a right to call them. I mean, you do. If, if there's something that's bothering you, it's like if you see a fire, you call the fire department, you see somebody fall over, you call an ambulance. There's no difference with the police department. So, but, you know, I would be the first to tell you also not to be confronting them because you don't know, you know, they have a knife.
I've seen guns.
Yeah, they do like gel fighting, gel gun fighting or something?
Yeah, I've seen actual guns on multiple adults that are there.
So, so that's another reason not to do it, but, you know, it's something that, that we wanna be aware of too, so we can address it. And like I said, we have a meeting Monday night at the police condition.
Yeah, and, and the police.
We will be there.
Yeah, and the police, uh, yeah, as the police supervisor said, that, you know, exactly what you said, that there, nobody would, you know, uh, you know, nobody's gonna get in trouble for calling the police and say, and, and, and making a complaint. So, you know, I just wanna make that clear, that that was.
There's, there's a charge out there that these kids, you know, if they make a false report, that they can be arrested for. Under false reports, it's one thing, just because you can't see something in a camera, doesn't mean you get arrested for a false report. Listen, you folks are know what you are feeling, and, and there are many others that have that same issue in other places. There's a group of kids that they've been watching and they've been arresting. Unfortunately, we don't have a youth detention center in Burks County right now. They're working on it, but everything goes to Morgantown, to a private facility that, that our youth, youth aid panels aren't going to, and neither are the, uh, neither are the juvenile authorities at this point because there were a lot of problems there, okay? So as soon as our youth facility opens up, I mean, I know felony cases where they didn't put somebody in. So once that happens, I'm hoping that things pick up a little bit more, um, because there's a lot of issues throughout the whole county. You know, the, the cursing, they gave up teaching cursive in school, now they teach cursing. So, and I'm a, I'm, I'm being facetious when they say that. But, yeah, they are, they are, and I know that.
And the music, I mean, I, we don't want music, but the language is.
Right. And like I said, we, we enjoy the basketball court and I know lots of other people enjoy the basketball court, but it is a big deterrent. People are kinda like, start to walk away, turn around.
Are there certain times that you're seeing or?
It's like after school.
Yeah, okay.
When it's getting warmer and then, um, like later in the summertime, it's like, like later in the evening, just before that, you know, like where it's dusk, I think is what you call it, and it starts to, uh, starts to pick up.
About four, three, four kids, five kids.
Oh, it's like eight of them.
Oh, we're in.
Yeah, yeah.
I would be able to pick them out.
No, I, I said, we've hit it, I, I think I mentioned, we, we have, we and Northern Burks have a pretty good idea.
Who they are.
It's a perpetual thing.
But it is a police issue, so we continue to call.
Yes, yes. Back, you call.
Thank you.
I have a question relevant to that.
Sure.
Township owns a basketball court, but first of all, let me stand up and do this correctly. Well, though, where is Lady Wall West, Will and Tree Garden? The township owns the court, right?
Yes.
So there's already fine clauses as far as rules, regulations and the law.
That's correct.
So, Will and Burks responds, at what point do they get cited?
Well, police have discretion, so they have to, they have to look at what's going on, what they're going to have when they go to court. So they can't just say, well, we got here, because it always happens after they get there.
Okay, how do, how do you know if there's any citation you can give them?
Well, I can, so I don't, I'm not gonna go too far down this route, but what is the reason I need to talk to you with it? But, um, there has been, I'm just gonna say in the past, I'm not gonna say a group or whatever, but there has been in the past recently, a trespass. We have the ability to trespass from our property. And right now, currently, an individual has been trespassed, and that's, that's all Mark's property, township property basically, uh, within Maiden Creek Township, so.
So then if they're not abiding by the rules, they trust, basically are trespassing on township property.
That's correct, but we gotta go through.
But then you, at that point.
Yeah.
That's right. So then if it happens.
You should have the classification.
If it happens again, like let's, you know, so this, this individual has been trespassed, if he gets picked up, he, she, I should say, gets picked up at a bar.
No, I understand the incident actually.
Yep.
The problem is also that, that they're juveniles.
Right.
So juvenile law is completely, I mean, it's not totally different.
Well, new law would be nice to sell if they didn't leave it or not. It's a nice place to put them. Actually, I built the place, so.
I didn't H P and C work there.
Uh, well, I'm a white fish, I'm a dog, so I know me more than most.
All right, we got it. Go ahead.
Are they able to, um, cite the parent because they're juveniles? How does that work?
Well, you can't cite the parents for something that the child does.
Okay.
Um, it'd be like saying, well, your, your kid broke a window and I'm gonna cite you for it.
Okay.
You can be held liable for damages.
Okay.
But they, it's a process.
Okay.
Now, now, some of the process that we're dealing with is, is getting it into the juvenile system and, uh, and, and I'll tell you, the system doesn't always work right.
I know.
And it's so sad to, to deal with that for many people that have dealt with that same process and problem. You know, you get out there, it's like cars running stop signs, but you can't be there for all of them.
Right.
Um, and sometimes you get lucky and then you write them and then you go to court and then they appeal it when they get found guilty and you go to county court. But all that time, there's police officers missing from the street too, while 15 more people are doing the exact same thing. Um, it seems like the processes don't work enough and the state hasn't looked at, at raising fines since, um, what is it, 1975 for municipalities?
Okay.
Cause then the fines were five dollars, so they went up to 25. But 12 and a half of that goes to the state and, and the fines and costs are almost $200. But all that state money except $12.50. So we paying overtime for the police officers to go to court because normally they're doing it on, on their off time. And, and it doesn't seem to matter to these, these kids. And it's sad. And, and I will tell you, some of them are carrying guns.
I know, and it's, it is the, and my heart just get to be, it is a serious thing to even witness that with children around. I just.
I can tell you that there's some things in the works. That's all I can say, that, you know, the police are aware of it. Um, unfortunately, it can't be everywhere. Like I said, we just lost an officer that retired, so now we're gonna hire one. You know, it's gonna take a little bit to get him on the street.
I just appreciate you hearing us out.
It's also the remoteness of the location to, you know, community park. Believe it or not, there is happenings of similar there too.
Yeah.
But especially now, you got soccer, you got baseball, you got pickleball. When you have members of the community there, it's not gonna have that problem, but they're the only ones there, so they have taken it over. And it's not a new problem. I have friends who were, they're across the street, two down, and 10 years ago, they were saying about the drugs.
It's been a rotational thing though too, because it, you know, you start enforcing here, then they go elsewhere and then you force there.
They're not a plan.
You go to, yeah.
Have you ever like considered taking, taking the basketball, a group set down to earth?
Oh, they're still gonna be there.
Yeah, they'll still be there, it's their, it's their hangout squad.
Yeah, they'll, they'll find another one real close by.
Are they actually playing basketball or are they just like?
People do.
Yeah, they don't play basketball.
Yeah, some people do, I've seen that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
And, and a lot of people come from out of areas, let's face it, they have cars. Today, we can travel so far, so quick and you could be in Main Creek and you've never even heard of it before. So, and it's a growing problem. Eventually, our police department's gonna have to meet the, the needs, the fire department has to meet the needs of the growing community. Our ambulances are meeting those needs and so are all the road crew. I mean, it's, it's all a process for the township.
Interesting.
And, uh, back when it was farm country, nobody wanted to come out and milk cows or anything, they wanted to come out and tip them, but other than that, um, it became, it became a little city and that's where we're at now.
You guys could have Park and Rec considered transformative at pickleball, I would like that.
Nice, nice. We haven't requested.
It'll, it'll be huge.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
The kids won't be tolerating.
No.
No. The natural world is small.
I think we've already talked through about, it's about to put cameras in there.
The cameras won't do that.
No, right.
We still gotta respond to it.
He's got cameras.
I do have cameras, right, but, um, you know, but the, the question I have is what do I do for like follow-up, right? I, you know, we, we brought it to your attention, um, I've brought it to the police's, you know, police officer's attention there multiple times, I'm the only one on their list that complains about it. Uh, so I don't know, you know, what do I do for follow-up, right?
Should they give you an incident number?
No.
Okay, I would ask for an incident number and then just be able to say, I, I just wanna call back and find out what transpired.
Well, I'm talking about like you guys as well.
I think what you do, obviously, go to that next, um, meeting that you can make of the police, which is a month from now, so it's a way next week, so that's what I was suggesting. And then these two gentlemen go to those meetings, so you can follow up with them at that meeting.
Okay. Okay.
We don't have the force for that, sorry.
No, I, I understand that, I just wanna make sure I know what the next process is.
So we're just letting the police.
And keep going, we should know about different reporting, what happens.
The more you reported, the numbers add up and they're gonna see the names, because when they get out there. Now, one thing I wanted to tell you, the day the Oldburg showed up, chances are, Mielberg was not gonna make any arrests.
Well, they didn't and with a knife being pulled on a young lady, it's okay unless she passes charges, but how, how's that, how's that safe for the rest of us?
It's not, it's not, but you have another agency coming in and they have a, they have a power of arrest here because we've got agreements signed with everybody in Burks County that we can do that. However, you know, it all depends too on the police officer who arrives. You know, some like owner John.
I almost think that they like made friends or made like, they're just chummy with them, I think maybe some of them are.
Well, some of it's trying to, I don't know if they're afraid of them, I think some of it is, uh, you know, you try to get cooperation by, by giving, you know, giving honey to a bee instead of trying to break it down, but it doesn't work all the time. You know, you might wanna do that once or twice, but after that, you have to start putting the hammer down. So, thank you.
Thank you, good, thanks.
May I say something?
Sure.
Um, I just wanna mention that I heard through the grapevine about what's been going on in these parks. And have you thought about, um, strength in numbers, your neighbors?
So, yes, that was the thing, everybody on our.
On the other side of Cornerstone, on the, on.
Because they go to that other side. We've actually talked to quite a few members, um, it's just been a busy week, he's been traveling for business, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, everybody in close proximity, um, has said, oh, so, okay.
We're trying to ask them to show up.
Sure.
Right, and I think the problem is that they're just like tired of it and they just kinda like run out, you know, everybody runs into their house to, to avoid it, is what it comes down to.
We'll see what we can do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's just listeners.
So, first thing on the agenda is the fire prevention ordinance, this was on your agenda last month, it was our present, we did announce at that meeting that it would be moved to this evening, um, as we were making sure we had, uh, the ability to actually do this through fruition once it got adopted. So, that work's now been done, um, which is part of the second thing we'll be doing this evening. But it is, it's been advertised, it's ready to be adopted, um, you guys have any questions we can throw in if you'd like?
I, I don't, I appreciate it, yeah.
The fire chief worked on it, he's on board with it.
We're looking, we are, the partnership, we're looking to, um, go with, I guess LTL is looking to do the fire inspection for us, so.
They hired a, a fire chief, uh, from down in Chester Can, they wanna do this cyclically, not everybody all at once.
Right.
Always spread out.
Okay, so do I have a motion to consider adoption of the fire prevention ordinance two sixty-one?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
And then the next is, that goes right along with this, but since we don't have inspections now, as we are, uh, amending our fee ordinance to, uh, have costs for these fire inspections. And they broke it down into fire inspections for, uh, less than a thousand square feet and then fire inspections for buildings over ten thousand square feet. Having, uh, different, um, fees appropriate for those size buildings. So, um, by adopting this, uh, while the fees ready, they just start that annual process of, um, inspecting these commercial buildings and industrial buildings.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen twenty-five for the fire prevention fee schedule.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
Thank you.
We have Debbie DeJennet putting together a list in conjunction with the authority as somebody who puts that out for listed businesses.
Alright, you good? Public Works Department, Keith.
Before you, you have a proposal for some improvements for our garage doors. And when I say garage doors, I mean first two over here going this way, um, that is where our wash bay is located. One of the issues that we have there is when we have to pull our trucks in there, we cannot get our beds all the way up to wash everything, especially with the platform, we're actually pulling it crooked. So, I had overhead door come, come by and give me some ideas and one of the things they suggested, you know, getting rid of, thinking about a roll-up door, because the cost would be astronomical, would be the proposal I have in front of me where the actual tracks will actually go toward the ceiling. Give you more room and eliminate the actual door opener, which would go inside now. So, allow us to get a little more height with our beds, so we don't wash underneath them. The added bonus to doing this also is if anybody's ever lost power in their garage and they wanna get in the garage, you gotta pull the overhead handle to release it. These actually have a chain on the side of them, where if you lose power, you change doors up and down, so. For your consideration, um, any questions?
So, part of the reason this is coming up is because we've changed the, uh, the design of the shop across the street. So we're not, the plan is to make that shop more of a garage facility to store our equipment and our vehicles. And we're still going to, we're not gonna run water over there anymore because of the wash bay and all that. So it just makes sense to make the improvements to over here. So, yeah, this is just basically takes the door, the garage doors, instead of coming out horizontal, it's gonna now follow, follow the slope of the roof. So pulls, the track pulls it up close to the roof, so it gets it out of the way, so that they can go in and out of the trucks. Uh, yeah, what was the roll-up doors, just for, doesn't really matter, the cost, I think it was fourteen grand for one door.
Yeah, fifteen thousand for one.
So, it, uh, it just makes sense to put the tracks and just tuck up what we got, so. So do I have a, a motion to approve the, uh, replacement of the door, of the, either doors by overhead door to cost fifty-one hundred dollars?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, second, I'll just jump, I'll take it over. Uh, the second one was for the purchase of our storage building, the garage across the street. Um, we're gonna have to table that until we hear back for, uh, from Tom's getting, I guess his information over, we're waiting, oh, we're meeting with, um, one of the concrete contractors that is gonna be the bid for the foundation, so. Um, but until Clearspan can give us a, a nailed down quote, it doesn't make sense to do approval on it, so we're gonna table it for now. Anything else, Keith? You know, the, how to brush pickups been a lot?
The first one was, um, there's a little site break, there are little speed sweeps, we'll pick up two more in a week. And come Tuesday, if anybody's interested, we are planning twenty-five trees in the park, you're glad to come down and help out.
You learn today?
Yes. Night thirty.
You just want free labor.
I do.
I like freelance too. Now that, things been opened up, everything's good, like the bad, the rest of the facilities are all open up now, right? I'll let's take care of, so. Spring is here.
Anybody trying to find their roots?
Alrighty. I think that's it for Public Works, right? Okay, Parks and Rec, Anna Rogers.
Um, before you guys should have a quote, um, for consideration, uh, we've been discussing, uh, revan- repairing the Blaine Fire Company basketball courts. Uh, they've been neglected for some time now and one of the things we budgeted this year was to have the surface, uh, fixed in, uh, some maintenance on there, um, so that, uh, they can be better used again. Um, what our thoughts are is to keep it basketball and hockey, that's our thought right now. Um, I think we kinda thought around twenty for this, so this comes down significantly less. Um, I took some pictures, sent them over, just showing some of the damages that are over there right now. Um, Keith can speak more to the cost of the quote and everything, I'm not too privy there, but, um, something that we wanted to do, we've had a lot of interest in having that repaired and getting backed up to shape. We do plan on, um, also looking into buying some nets like we did at Cornerstone and putting some nets over there so that our company can play and anybody else can have the ability to play there, especially the roll of hockey, it seems to be a pretty popular cornerstone, so I feel like it'd be pretty popular over there too. Um, so I get this for your consideration, um, yeah.
I think, um, one of the things that we would, we need to have happen is, uh, get in communication with the relief, do that suit.
I've, uh, they're wanting me to go to their next meeting, so I'll be at their next meeting there to kinda see if they, is anything they can do to help with it, yes? Um, so, yeah, that's gonna be their next meeting, they're gonna give me information on that, so.
So I think for now, we'll just table this out until we.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Alright, Diane.
Okay, so as Emily said earlier, we were awarded eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the cornerstone bridge replacement through an LSA grant. Uh, Josh and I already signed paperwork because, uh, we had passed a resolution prior. So we also received a grant from Imagine Burks for six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the community park tree planting. I do need a motion, um, to authorize the chairman and manager to sign that paperwork.
Who make a motion?
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the Fleetwood Rotary just contacted me yesterday, they got a grant from the D C E D to put in a pollinator garden. Um, Josh picked out a spot in the community park, we have the new bridge, um, and they, Keith, want to install that next Saturday.
I saw that email.
Yeah, they would like to meet with you, yes, so things are moving quickly. Uh, but it's nice, uh, to get some of these grants and do some nice work. I was completely serious about the pickleball idea at the P C R, so I am trying to go to the park and record meetings and discuss that. And I hesitate, um, to upgrade a basketball court at another place in the community. We need to really think through this because we don't wanna shift the problem to another section of town either.
That's what I'm.
So, we need a little bit of, of discussion and thought on this situation.
I would love to do tennis or something else.
Something else, right?
That we don't have.
We put another dog park over there. Appreciate it, thank you. Alright, new business, um, Diane, she was a part of this too, so big part of it. So, thank you. So we need to accept the, uh, twenty twenty-five audit, so I have a motion. So, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, question carries. Alright, uh, do I have a motion to approve the bills and accept the charter report as we have been presented? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Alright, public comment about the, on the agenda items, where we spoke with you guys in the second round, Diane?
I can answer all the questions, thank you.
Third round?
I should have brought it up there in the park area, but, uh, just two events that are coming up in the community. Uh, the first one we have is April twenty-second, we're doing the cleanup of the parks again. Uh, we did this last year, very successful. Um, I have flyers out on the township website, you can see, you can also sign up. Uh, essentially what we're doing is we're gonna be here at the township loading at four P M. And then we're gonna disperse to all the parks and we're gonna be cleaning up trash, um, and just keeping things looking good. Uh, it was a very successful event last year, took about three hours. Um, so if anybody would like to be a participant, we greatly appreciate that. Uh, the second item is May third is our flea market slash crash show, it's gonna be at the community park. Um, uh, we had a flea market in the park in October and that was extremely successful, very busy. Um, but also the same day that Fleetwood does theirs, so there's gonna be a lot of people outside on the road checking it out. So, uh, there's again on the township website, there's a flyer along with a sign up there. Um, so if you're interested in that, feel free to sign up or attend, uh, Park and Rec will be there, uh, at the concierge stand, um, selling hot dogs and other various items that proceeds will go to help fund other park projects.
Appreciate it, and all the work you guys do, thank you. Alright, you go for it? For five?
Yeah, I have a question, um, it was mentioned earlier that there was going to be streams cleaned up from tree, um, and trees and things like that down. Is, are we talking all streams in this township?
Yeah, where the bridge, we're allowed to go fifty feet on each side of the bridge, so they're, they're gonna take care of trees that are laying in the water and problem areas that we can get to, I mean, it's, there's a lot, so I wonder if we can get them.
That's my point, because the little creek along this western river has trees that have fallen in, there's branches and things like that.
As is every other creek.
What's that?
As is every other creek, we're.
Well, no, I know that, I'm bringing that up because it's one that is, that needs to be cleaned up, so I'm bringing it to your attention.
Understood.
And I, I'm asking for it also to be cleaned up, you want to?
Understood.
So I would like to see, you know, some follow-up with that. Are you saying that you will?
Well, I, I literally just said we're gonna go out of the creeks and clean them up. So I'm, I'm not gonna knock on your door and say we're gonna go clean the creek.
We need a permit.
Yeah, yeah, so a lot of it, we need to be able to get in there, if, if we can get it, we will get it out, is what we're saying, so. That's as good as I can say right now.
And, and for the record, you know, it's okay if somebody wants to go down, I'd rather we access some of it, because some of it can be only accessed from, um, that part of the stream.
We understand, yeah.
Well, I know, I know you're familiar with it, but I'm saying for the record that, that's, I'm fine with that, because there are some serious large sections of trees that are falling and, and people.
Well, like, I believe before we go on to anybody's property, anyway, we do get people excited anyway, right? Yeah, so, 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 yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to get in contact with you, so. Anybody else? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Oh, yeah.